I just, I got in the call, it's like I've got five minutes.
Well, we put all five up.
Okay, um, we'll call the meeting to order. Um, let's start with the roll call. Mike Bollier.
Mike Bollier, Hebron.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Joe Coletti. Here, Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson, Andover.
Pam Farrington. Karen Forlino will be here. Drew Golfing.
Drew Golfing, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet. And Heather Summer from Hebron. We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no dangers.
Scott's coming in.
Oh, great.
Yeah, Scott's coming in, he's home.
Is Dawn on?
Dawn is on.
Dawn Scott Soyet just joined us, for the record. Okay. So that brings us to the public comment portion of the agenda. Hebron, Andover, Marlboro, community engagement in attendance at board public meetings is welcomed. The public comments segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the board may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the board is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discuss only matters on the agenda, the board is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody that would like to make public comments?
Kim Kane, Gulf Lane, Hebron. I want to introduce myself as the new REA president. I want to thank Ethan Spinelli for his great job representing us for the past eight years. And I look forward to working with you to continue to do what's best for Ram and for the talented teachers who work here. I just wanted you to be able to put a face of the name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Hall from Hebron, Aniston, actually. I was the teacher here earlier in the year that works in Columbia that was hoping you'd welcome Columbia students. So thank you very, very much. I know there's not many this year, but I think you're going to see an increase each year as the families get to know this community. So I appreciate you moving forward with that. I also just want to let you know that I will be running to join your board event this fall, so I'm very hopeful that I might be able to participate in the great work that you do supporting this learning community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Is there anybody online who would like to make public comment? Okay, all good. All right. Brings us to the Board of Ed chair report. There's not a lot this, this week, just welcoming everybody back to the school year. I walk every day around the building and it's just fun to see it get busier and busier. Looking forward to the convocation, which is next Wednesday, I'm sure you're.
Monday.
Monday, sorry. I'll be there, I promise. If your schedule permits, I've only been able to go one time and it was great, but if your schedule permits, Colin can share the information for it and we would love to have you there.
Yeah, what time is?
Nine o'clock.
In the morning?
Yep.
Oh, good. I was thinking of night for some reason. Night's great.
It'd be a light crowd.
And honestly, that's really all I have for, for this month. Colin?
So, yeah, welcome back, everybody. It's hard to believe we've been off for two months. I, I sent my, my welcome back letter to staff just last week and I said to them that I, it's, it's always with mixed emotions that I send this letter out because I'm very excited for the start of a school year, but I do love the summertime and the relaxing pace that comes with it. But, uh, but we're very excited about convocation on Monday, certainly excited about students returning to school next Thursday. We have welcomed a variety of staff members, new staff members to the district. We have certified staff, non-certified staff. We were able to identify and hire an athletic trainer, which, you know, is something that I appreciate the board's support of. We have hired four safety officers, which again, I appreciate the board's support of that. One of them, good to see you, Tim, thanks for coming. And yeah, we actually met with the safety officers last week. We had a full day with them, the administrators and I met with them and just, again, I think it's going to be a really positive change for, for the district and people will feel better about knowing that their presence is here. We have new teacher orientation on Wednesday and Thursday this week where we will welcome the new certified staff members onboard and I look forward to seeing them on Wednesday and Thursday when school kicks off.
How many people?
Not many. We have five-ish, six-ish. Three of them are one-year positions because we actually had some people going out on leave. So I can get the specific information. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not very many. And actually, one of the positions, I think the board knows this, that was vacated by a special ed teacher, actually is back now with us as a, as a member of the administrative team. Today was her first official day. So it's always good to see people wanting to stay, stay a part of the Ram community. I want to make note of a couple of things. You know, Heather talked about the busyness of things during the summer. The parking lots are definitely emptier, but that does not mean that there is a lack of work going on here. I always say that our facilities, custodial maintenance staff, it is their, the summertime is an absolutely crazy time of the year for them. The amount of work that they do is tremendous and, you know, I constantly am hearing compliments by so many people who come to visit the Ram community, colleagues of mine, you know, people from other school districts that come to visit for one reason or another, and they're just always amazed at, you know, the condition of the, of the buildings. And, and really that's a testament to mutually offer our facility staff and maintenance staff and custodial staff, they do a phenomenal job. And I know that they're actually ready for the summer to be over with so that they could actually slow their pace down a bit. You're going to be provided with a high-level overview about our summer projects and summer work that is done by, you know, the summer work done by our custodial maintenance staff and then the summer projects that, you know, Michael works collaboratively with contractors to make sure get accomplished. So that will be later on in the agenda. But I, again, I appreciate all the work that they do. Similarly, just want to thank the, you know, our non-certified 12-month staff. I can't tell you that after, you know, 25 years as a, as a school and district administrator, people are surprised that I've worked during the summer. Like, I get that all the, what do you mean you're worked during the summer? I thought you worked at education? Yeah, a lot of us worked during the summer. So, um, you know, there's so much behind the scenes work that is done by our non-certified clerical, secretarial staff. Obviously, our custodians, which I've already mentioned them, our administrative team, our department coordinators come in and plan things like convocation and new teacher orientation. So just all the work that happens during the summer, I just, again, I'm very, very appreciative of, of the things that people do. An exciting thing, Heather mentioned walking in the morning, one of the things that she'll, when we speak, it's always, track looks great, track looks great. If you haven't had a chance, when you go outside, you should take a look. They've put down the asphalt. That's, that's definitely been the biggest project this summer. They laid the asphalt, the base, so that's done. It needs to cure, I believe, for 28 days or somewhere in that neighborhood and then they can put down the rubberized surface, then they have, that sets relatively quickly, then they go through the process of painting and whatnot. We had a meeting, Eva, Michael Schlehouffer and myself had a, had a meeting with the contractor that's overseeing the project and, and we are keeping our fingers crossed that the weather will be agreeable and if it is, and we can stay, stay in the timeline that we're on, our students will be able to access that, the field right around the end of September, beginning of October. So had to do a little bit of rescheduling for some of our, our late September athletic contests that were scheduled to be on those field, on that field, but it's keeping our new athletic director, Michelle Landry, busy doing that. But again, we're super excited about that project coming to fruition, so.
So I did notice on social media that people were like, so can we use the track again? You might want to put another little article in the River East.
Sure.
And just kind of explain to people about, it looks like it's done. I mean, the curing thing for 28 days, I didn't know that.
They, they can, I mean, it's, it's like a driveway. We don't, I'm not promoting anybody to use it, but I mean, it, it can't be heavy traffic. You know, we can't have trucks on it, so that's one of the things it has to set for 28 days. But again, you know, our, the contractors that are doing work there, they certainly are stepping. But you're right, I can get a reminder out.
Because they're, they're already looking at it.
Well, yeah, I pulled in, I walked, I walked the track. So, I was talking to Mike about, I don't know what, what, what's supposed to be on there because I figured they weren't running on a driveway, right? And there were people on it, so, you know.
Just the River East.
And I broke the, but the lawnmower drove across it, so I figured I couldn't hurt it.
Well, I appreciate, I'll definitely get a reminder out and we'll push a message out to the entire community.
My brother's sneaking. Don't be true.
It's the oils that are coming out of the asphalt that need to dry up. That's basically what's happening, so you're getting lots of oil on your shoes.
Oh, shit. They look okay. I'll be alright.
Okay, so that brings us to item seven, the consent agenda. There are three items in your packet, 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3, which are the meeting minutes from June 9th, June 25th, special meeting, and August 6th, special meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
That's Mike Sharon.
Second.
Second is Mike Bollier. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And anyone abstaining? All right, so that brings us to new and unfinished business, the discussion of possible action of proposed text, textbook for CCSU early childhood ECE class at Ram High School. It's enclosure 8.1 in your package.
Yeah, I could, so, you know, this, this was something that was brought up at the last special meeting that we had earlier this month. As I explained to the board members who were present at that meeting, the textbook adoption process is very similar to essentially the process for updating policies or adopting policies, where it comes to the board, not as a first read, but it's presented to the board at a meeting. And then there has to be, basically the board has the ability after it's presented to, to adopt the, the book for use at the next meeting. And so my recommendation is to adopt the textbook. It is just, again, a reminder, it is a required textbook that is used by Central Connecticut State University. We unfortunately didn't know, have the title until right before we had our special meeting. We took it to the program subcommittee, had an opportunity to answer any questions they may have, did a special meeting, nobody reached out to me with questions or concerns, so my recommendation is to use the motion that is in your board notes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the use of the book, beginnings and beyond, foundations and early childhood education for use at Ram High School?
So move.
Scott Soyet, second?
I'll second.
Drew Golfing?
It's been a long summer.
Any other discussion on the textbook? And I think you have it.
I do, yeah. I, it's been available in office, but you know, if you might be able to wait and show it up, if, uh, anybody wants to see it?
Audrey!
Jesus. Thanks, Eric.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay.
10-page table of contents.
Yeah.
All right, discussion of possible action regarding a change in date for January 2026 Board of Education meeting enclosure, it's enclosure 8.2 in your packet.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the memos, 8.2 in your packet, is a memo that I wrote to the board. It explains that we discovered, Eva and I were looking at the, the board meeting schedule for the, the ones that are currently scheduled and we, I realized and brought it to Eva and I said, we can't have a meeting in January 12th for the presentation of the budget. And she said, no, we cannot. In order for us to have adequate time to put together and, and present the budget to the Board of Education, we really need to move the scheduled one, I think which is June 10, or, I'm sorry, January 12th to January 26th. So I'm asking the board to consider voting to change the date of that regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, so do we have a motion to change the scheduled Board of Education meeting from January 12th, 2026 to January 26th, 2026? Mike Bollier?
Second.
First, Gabe Marks, the second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Item 8.3, summer facilities projects update.
Yes, so 8.3 is a memo from Michael Schlehouffer, which does provide that overview of the projects that taken on over the summer, as well as the routine summer work that keeps our facility staff so busy, as I mentioned earlier. I think Michael should be on, I see his name, so Michael actually is going to take over and just be able to kind of summarize some of the information that's provided in the memo. And I know that there might be some questions because there's some abbreviations and acronyms used in there, so.
Good evening. So I just want to touch base on the capital projects first. Obviously, the construction of the new athletic track. Currently, we're doing a 28-day rest period of the asphalt to let the oils seep out of it and evaporate before they'll put down the membrane, which is the rubberized membrane that the students would run on, and then paint the lines. Anticipation is about the third week in August pending weather that it would be turned over to the district. Talking with, with Eva regarding the usage of the track, I know you had mentioned that maybe Colin was going to send something out and communicate with the, the families, but Andy from the town also sends out like a Friday update to the town people and maybe including something in his, he could put something in there for it. We advise them to stay off of it until, until it's fully operational and turned over to us. This week, they're going to start putting the fencing in, core drilling the, the holes for it and putting the sleeves in, putting the chain link fence around, which will help with the situation, install the scoreboard, footings, put that in. That's all going on while the 28 days is still waiting for completion. We had about $40,000 budgeted for concrete sidewalk repairs. To date, those have been completed. I did a walkthrough of the middle school lower ADA access project, meeting with the engineer. We're going to create a punch list, there's a few things that we still feel that needs to be addressed that were part of the scope that are either inaccurate or, again, need to be addressed. So that pretty much sums up the, the capital projects. We also had, which is not on this, we had an indoor air quality project that we, we took on and it was used with grant mon, uh, grant funding to cover the cost. And to date, I would say 80, 80% of it is done. A lot of, 20% left is behind the scenes programming. So that shouldn't affect anything as far as, you know, the kids coming back to school and, and that. So this is probably like one of the first summers I've actually been fully staffed, both with the summer help and custodians. So it was definitely a huge help to take on a lot of extra little projects throughout the building. But just to summarize on some of the, the things that the custodians, the maintainers handled, they high dust and low dust classrooms and common areas. They washed windows that they were able to access. All the furniture was pulled out, student desks and chairs wiped down, cafeteria tables, lab tables, et cetera. They cleaned 12 of the stairwells, top to bottom. We sealed all the rubber with a conditioner to preserve the stair treads. We shampooed all the carpets throughout the building. All 62 bathrooms were detailed and disinfected. We tested all the GFIs and tripped them for safety. We also did a walkthrough of all the lighting and addressed lights that were out. We also advanced 800 locker combos in the middle school to the next, um, the next combination set for the kids coming in. We washed and waxed over 3,000 square feet of VCT, which is vinyl competition tile, and then sheet goods is referred to like your vinyl sheet goods, which is like in the atrium of the high school. We, we painted the stage floor and the locker rooms in both buildings. And then we also painted classrooms and hallways on an as-needed basis. Both gym floors were refinished the second week in August. They were closed for about a week and that's been completed. There was 143 classroom condition reports that the maintainers went through, kind of like a punch list from the teachers on things that they need addressed, wants, needs for their rooms. And then we also had a bunch of inspections, such as sprinkler testing, the annual test. We had a five-year tank inspection for the sprinkler system, which they had to drain the 30,000 gallons of water out, go into the tank, check the inside of the tank, and then refill it. We also had the fire system inspected, fire curtain, fire extinguishers, the fire doors, all the operational walls, like portable walls that move, garage doors, the gates, they were all inspected. The annual bleacher review was, was, was done and inspection. The kitchen hoods were cleaned and were also inspected. Fume hoods for the science departments were inspected. We also inspected all the paint booths, changed the filters, the grease trap for the kitchen, and then the acid tank for the science department in the middle school was also changed out. And with that, I would take any questions if anybody has any?
Mike, it's Mike Sharon, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Last time I think we met, we talked about the excess material storage. Drove past the school the other day, I noticed that that was, appears to be in place. Is that true?
That is in place and completed.
Excellent. We have another step, right? We're going to put up a fence at some point?
No.
That's pretty enough?
Yeah, the shrubbage, they said that that was sufficient.
Perfect. And then the other thing I wanted to ask you about was the sheds, right? We had talked about buying, purchasing some sheds for, I think, three different locations on site? Was that full as well?
Yeah, so the, the three sheds were purchased and installed and the three units that were there were demolished and removed.
All right. Long list, but thank you.
No problem.
The loading dock is for next year?
Yeah, it's in rough shape. Ideally, we need to tackle that project.
Yeah, but we need to, out of school time, or can we do it during this way?
We can't do it during school year.
Yeah, because that's, that's where we get deliveries.
That's great, Mike, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
All right, the 8.4 is the draft subcommittee meeting calendar for 2025, 2026. It's enclosure 8.4 in your packet.
So, you know, we followed a relatively similar format to what we've done, which is, you know, trying to space the meetings out every, you know, four to six, four to five weeks. Tried to look at when we would need to meet with different committees at different times in order for like budget preparation. And so the draft calendar is there. They're coming up quick. We're looking at policy, policy subcommittee and potentially program, you know, within a couple of weeks, so. And then we see facilities and finance as well. If there's anybody that sees anything that is concerning, we can certainly, you know, make adjustments, but otherwise there's a recommended motion in your packet to adopt this, this schedule.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 subcommittee meeting calendar?
So move.
Mike Sharon, second?
Make the second.
Amy Romancheck? Any other discussion on the calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. That brings us to the personnel reports, enclosure 8.5, sorry.
So just two resignations since our last meeting. Emily Queen, who is a math teacher at Ram High School, resigned effective July 10, 2025. She'd been employed with, with the district since April 2021. And Kristen Brewer, people services supervisor for the district, has resigned effective July 18th, 2025. She'd been employed with the district since August of 2011 and certainly wish Emily the best with her growing family and wish Kristen the best with her, with her new administrative position in another district.
That will bring us to 8.6, which is the financials.
All right. So 8.6A in your packet has the year-end unaudited financials for fiscal year 24, 25. So based on the information that I have at hand, there's a projected net favorable position of $1.1 million, $1,249,546. We have to take away any shortfall in revenue, which was $192,181, leaving a revised net favorable, net position of $1,57,365. So what, how we got to those available funds is your unallocated personnel. So to clean up the accounts, any available funds for benefits and salaries is rolled into unallocated personnel, so you have $472,551. Your special ed out of district transportation had $119,661. And your private tuition for special ed had available of $90,138. That's, those are the largest chunks, the rest is, and a lot of it was because of positive changes for our students in terms of, we've either brought them back or they took their diploma or they moved out of district. So that helped contain what we expended during the year. The main driver for the projected shortfall in revenue was the movement, again, in the high-cost special ed students, the rentals, the gate receipts, Medicaid and student parking. We did see an increase in tuition, we brought in two tuition students from two other districts. And then we also had our E-rate funding, we got a little bit more than was anticipated for the projects that we were doing. So based upon the net favorable position, the district will be able to keep 2% or $640,323. Again, this will all be done during the audit period to ensure that all the calculations are accurate and no other adjustments need to be made. And so we're projecting to give back as credit offsets to the town during the 26, 27 budget, $417,042. So hopefully the towns will be happy with that. The capital improvement fund, based on the date that I've done this, everything had already rolled forward to the 26 year, 25, 26 year. So there is an uncommitted of $90,404. This is part of the track project and the encumbrance was in the current year that we'll report on next month. The VOE Reserve for General Education Fund also has, is reflecting an uncommitted amount of $48,531, but this is also part of the repair to the field. So we moved or chose to, the board chose to put all the money towards the track this year. So that, that $48,000 was left from unexpended field repairs that we didn't get to. So I'm assuming eventually we'll go back to that unless the board chooses to change the money and put it in a different allocation. So are there any questions that the board may have based on what I presented?
Because, and when the audit starts, is that October?
It's already started. It started in May.
So, yeah, this $90,000, so it's for the track.
It's for the track, so.
It's for money from last year's budget.
So there was a purchase order sitting, I had to close the purchase order, so that freed up the money. So it looks like there's money available, but there isn't because it's in this year's.
It's in the 25, 26 year. So it's encumbering 25, 26.
These, these funds roll forward.
So, so essentially our budget has gone up by $90,000 because we'll spend that amount?
Not going to go up, it's the same amount of money, it's been sitting there, it just rolls forward.
Well, yeah, but I'm just wondering how it gets, I'm trying to figure out, this $90,000 gets. thousand gets spent in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. But out of...
Same funds.
The same funds that already was there. So there's, does it show up though as a part of this favorable?
It's not part of that at all. It's capital improvement, so it's a something that's for...
Separate from these accounts, okay. Yeah, just trying to keep the ducks.
Are there any other questions? So hearing none, we have the student activity and so since, I have to apologize, I had a severe migraine, I haven't had a migraine in quite some time and this one was a doozy. So I, I did some oopsie boos this time around. So I was working on it, printed off, I had everything all set. I went to go print it again and chose the most simplest thing to put in the fund, I forgot to put in the fund. So you got seventy-four million and you really shouldn't have had seventy-four million. It was a nice, but thank you for catching that is...
I, I think the students be trapped.
Yeah.
Seventy-four million dollars to spend on activities.
Not at all. So again, it all balances with the, the bank, so that, that's a hundred percent, it does balance with the bank. So are there any questions that the board may have on that? So hearing none.
Is there a finder's fee or you know, something like that?
Seventy-four million that doesn't exist.
Loser's fee, baby.
It's a gold star for you. So moving on, so eight point six C is the unaudited food service monthly end report. And so this is the year end and again, apparently I had a typo on this one as well. So we ended the year with thirty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents as compared to last year, we were at thirty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. So we were, we're in, we're in the ballpark of where we've been ending up. Hopefully, moving forward, we will see positives and as opposed to losses. So in starting this school year, there will be no more subsidies, I guess, from the state of Connecticut. So they were doing a star program, they were feeding breakfast and paying us more money for breakfast. We're going back to normal operations for national school lunch programs for breakfast.
So does that mean we're still, we're not cutting back the program, just the money isn't coming from the state? Okay.
So are there any other questions?
This, this is, this year's the new vendor, right?
Correct.
And that's working with Marlboro as well.
Yeah, so you'll see definitely different numbers than you have seen in the past weeks as you'll be adding harvest to our report. Okay, so hearing no more questions. Moving on to eight point six D, which is the short-term investment fund account. So in June of twenty twenty-five, we reinvested one thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. On July and August, I will review when we come back in September because it just makes sense to keep the fiscal years on the same, same pattern. Are there any questions that the board may have on that? Okay, so hearing none, these are the, so eight point six E of your packet has the year-end transfers that I had to do and the four hundred thirty-five thousand is part of the non-utilization of funds that moved up into the unallocated personnel. So if there are any questions on this before the board chooses to make a motion, I will gladly assist in trying to answer.
I definitely like the number of entry, two, three, seven, one, 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 one point one, one.
Yeah, oh, so that, that I have too. So here you go. So in review, review, I like to tattle on myself, so I'm not used to having company, but we, I tattle on myself all the time. So this actually showed up at the board meeting last month, except I named it entry two, three, eight instead of two, three, seven. So to cover myself and make sure that we have an approval for it, I put it on this month as well. But yes, isn't that a lovely number?
Any other comments on that? Okay, do we have a, a motion to approve the transfer in the amount of five hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy and eighty-four cents?
So moved.
Drew Golfing, first. Second is Scott Soyet. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay.
Thank you.
Colin brings us to the calendar of events.
Yeah, so well, you know, talked about some big ones coming up with convocation, obviously, next Monday, first day of school on the twenty-eighth, about the next Thursday, then we'll go into Labor Day weekend, so it's kind of nice. Everybody likes to start with a two-day work week and then go into a long weekend. It's a, it's a, it's a good way of easing our toes into the water. But, you know, we've got an open house coming up at the high school. We've actually had some events already at the middle school. We've had students walk, we have walk-around days. That was, that was last week, we had a walk-around day. There's another walk-around day coming. That's just an opportunity for students new to the middle school or even if they're eighth graders coming back and just familiarizing themselves with their territory. And so, yeah, it's a, we're, we're excited to get everybody in and get things up and going. Sports have already started, practices, kicking in the gear.
Are they used in the field between, you know, in the track?
No.
No, that's being less fallow.
Yep, it's, yeah, we don't want any, any bad things happening. Too much of an investment to have anything go wrong.
Okay, student discipline report.
So again, the, this, it's been updated to have information from June, so you have not only from June, but you also have the totals for each years for number of in-school suspensions as well as the out-of-school suspensions.
All right, so the committee reports, facilities, safety and transportation?
Well, we're going to meet September fourth. So it's been a little while since we've met, but a lot of the projects we talked about tonight that we've discussed much of the time during our meetings from last year. So looking forward to getting our agenda set for what's next.
Okay, finance, audit, compliance and insurance?
I don't, we, we haven't met over the summer and I don't, we have a meeting scheduled for the fourth.
Same night, yep.
Yep, so I don't know what the agenda will be though. Will you have things for us?
Yes, we will. We definitely have some things to discuss.
All right, and negotiations?
So we've concluded the negotiations with the administrators bargaining unit and have a tentative agreement. I anticipate coming to our September meeting to review the changes to the contract that were, that we came to in negotiations and things went really well. And yeah, I'll bring that to everybody in September for the board to consider approving.
Yeah, so we have a meeting scheduled for the third, right?
Mm-hmm. I will have some policy. I am working on, it's, I, when I saw that data, I was like, oh, I got to start getting some stuff ready, so.
But we're getting to the end, aren't we?
We are, but the state loves to just kind of throw you for a curveball every now and again.
There's no end.
Yeah, it is just, you're just constantly going. There, there are some legislative changes, there are some policy changes that are being made that are driven by legislation and, and recommended for, to be changed per school board policy around updates around those. I'm actually going to send those out to the board in totality because the board in one of the bylaws last year, I think it was last year, right? Last year or two years ago, changed the policy to allow me to update policies that are legislatively driven and recommended by our attorneys. So I do have some new ones that we're going to get into the books and I will share that information with the board. I'm, I have a to-do list here and it's on my to-do list to get to this week, so.
Program and communication?
We met over the summer to discuss the new textbook.
Okay. And then Carrie's not here, she's the cave facilitator, coming on the report.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a report, but I will say, I, I believe that I've gotten some stuff and board members may have received information about registering for the caves caps convention, which is traditionally held towards the end of November. I'll have Jessica send an email out to, to everybody in the board, just trying to identify people who are interested in, in attending the caves caps convention this year. I'll have to get that out sometime this week and then you just let her know if you're interested.
I highly recommend it, it was great this last year.
Yeah, Scott went last year, I went and Drew went, I think Joe, did he go the year But he's also been, so if you have questions about it, feel free to, to reach out to any of the board members. It really is worth going. And did I send you a note saying, could we, I did? Okay. I want to get either our band or chorus there, but I couldn't remember who I sent you a note. All right, do we, that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That's Mike Bollier. Gabe Marks, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Do I get a medal for how fast that was?